All right. Good evening, everybody. We will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of August 15th, 2022 to order. The clerk will help us with the roll, please.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mulhall.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ten present.
Okay, thank you. If you join me for the pledge, followed by the invocation, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our country, our community, and our freedoms. We thank you for all the current military, all of our current military servicemen or members and the many veterans who have served this country in the past. We recognize that without them, we would not enjoy our freedoms. We thank you for their service, sacrifice, and pray you bless each and every one of them. We thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout this country, and pray for their safety. We ask tonight that you give each of us wisdom, compassion, patience, and courage as we conduct our city business here this evening. We ask for these things in Christ's name. Amen. All right. Under item three, public comment, we do have one individual registered with us tonight, John Albertini. Hi, John.
Hi, everyone.
Welcome. If you'd come on up here, and he's already got the microphone on for you, so welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is John Albertini. I live at 506 Park Avenue in Belvidere, Illinois here. My comment will be brief. It's just about the Boone County Fair. I think they did a stellar job. It was second-largest population in their history. Everything went well. We had a good time. My wife and I went. We enjoyed everything. The one thing I did have a problem with, and I guess they base this on COVID, because everything gets to be blamed on COVID. I went to eat, and for an Italian sausage sandwich and a Coca-Cola, I paid eighteen dollars. I find that to be a little ridiculous. I don't care if it's COVID, if it's a fair, what it is. I think eighteen dollars is a little expensive. I don't know how you people feel about it, but I think Boone County could do a little better next year at their fair. If this is what we're going to expect next year, I represent a large group of people in my community. I will be asking them to boycott the fair if they do not become a little more consistent with food prices. Eighteen dollars is ridiculous. Not only the food will I have boycott, but I may ask them to boycott the fair as well. I feel that this needs to be addressed to the Boone County, not you people here. You have nothing to do with it, but I just had to bring it up because I felt that it was unfair. I don't know how you feel about it, but my wife and I were outraged at eighteen dollars for that small amount of food and beverage. So hopefully next year, they can get it a little better. I thank the council for their time to let me speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
You have a good evening here, everybody.
All right. Moving on, we have item four, the approval of minutes. A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of August 1st, 2022, as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. Any corrections, any comments regarding that motion and second on the floor? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Item five, public hearing, we have none. Item six, special messages and proclamations, we have with us this evening Pam Lopez Fettis with Growth Dimensions. Hi, Pam. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We've had a lot of the same businesses that we're continuing to work with, with our projects. We currently have eighty-two open projects, forty-four that have opened in 2022. Forty-six of our open projects are industrial projects. Many others are enterprise zone activities, startups, as well as building improvements. We've been working with Project Kelly. As you know, we have our groundbreaking on next Thursday. That's August 25th at 11:00 a.m. I hope everyone could attend. Please let me know if you can. We'd like to acknowledge the elected officials that are present. We are also working with them in collaboration with the city on making sure that these grants submissions to the Department of Commerce and the Illinois Department of Transportation is in. Materials are what they need so we can get some awards in expeditious manner. I wanted to thank Brent for all his help and support in trying to get this done. And we're working with Project OM, otherwise known as the Fuel Center, not only on enterprise zone benefits for this project coming up, but other potential projects that they have at the same location, and understanding what businesses are wanting in maybe some long-term or short-term, some type of commercial activity as far as restaurants, hotel, and other support. We're trying to make this a place, a destination place, so people can say, also, we have options for vet venues and executive travel. So we're also trying to stay on the radar for Project Yukon. Currently, we're in third choice behind Hampshire and Marengo areas, but we're trying to stay on their radar in order to let them know that we're still available, and we're still a business-friendly environment for that project. That's a distribution project. We also have been engaged with 167 calls, which means basically it's our outreach with businesses, eighty-two our new activities, our new businesses that we haven't been engaged with before, eighty-five are returning. We are working with the Health Department in order to create those videos through the Prospero program in English and Spanish. We also have a translator on site that has translated a lot of our materials in both English and Spanish. Also, she's evaluating our websites, those resources that are available through Growth Dimensions of the city, through the state, and how accessible they are to businesses, not just for Spanish businesses, but for all businesses. And so we're looking for some recommendations and maybe propose some changes there. We're also working with translating our enterprise zone information. We're creating a video, and that's also available in Spanish and English. We just completed the translation and the video recording. In addition, we're working with, on Manufacturers' Day, that is scheduled for October 13th. We're collaborating with businesses that want to have onsite tours. We're also working with school districts in order to give them that experience and have an expo. We're also working with Northern Illinois University on a potential collaboration and a draft concept for a National Science Foundation for Regional Innovation. This will help us develop some ecosystem development surrounding manufacturing and how we can address some of those innovative ideas in order to spur development and new ideas in our community. And last, we have an invitation, save the date card, for our annual speak event. We have Andy Corkcamp. He's with General Mills. He's the Vice President of Manufacturing Engineering. He'll be speaking. I don't know if you're familiar with the name, but his father, Gary, was actually the plant manager years back. So he had kind of a, he would never lived here locally, but he said that visiting the plant when he was going into college really changed his life. So he's a 27-year veteran of General Mills, and we look forward to him sharing his knowledge, information, and how we can, focusing on leadership connections and key components about how to maximize an employee's strength. So I'm available for any questions, if there's any.
Any questions for Pam? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Have a good evening.
Right. And also, this evening, we have, excuse me, Mindy Long here with Ida Public Library. Hi, Mindy.
Hello.
Welcome. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
You know the drill.
I know the drill.
All right.
Okay, Mindy Long, Director of the Library. Before I start talking, I'm going to pass around some interesting materials I'd like you to look at. These are new books that we purchased for the library. They're part of our collection. They're called a Wonder Book. They play along as the child reads along. They're a little pricey, but, so we have a small collection right now, but we're trying to work on grants to get more. If you want to play, make sure you turn the volume down on the side here. So kind of take a look at those. They run about forty dollars apiece, so they're a little pricey, but they're really popular. Okay, so first of all, thank you to everybody who helped the library at the booths at the fair. We thought we were going to have a full house to work that table, but we had a lot of people out, staff out with various ailments and predicaments, and so we didn't have enough people to work the table. So thank you. If you handed out some promo items, we really appreciate it. Also, I forgot to announce the last time I was here that Dawn Brooks is our new board president. So next time you see her, welcome her to the library board. We had a really bad week with the people out all week, and Sunday night we had a massive storm surge that came through. We don't know if it was a lightning strike, what it was, but it took out our main transformer on Madison and Kishawaki Street. Comment had to come and repair that. We had no power. Monday, we were running an emergency power when I walked in the door, and they got that repaired, but then we had no internet. We found out that it took out our massive search protector for our servers. So good thing they did their job. We didn't lose any servers. Now, we also found out that it took out one of the motors in our air conditioner, so we're waiting for a part for the air conditioner. We have no air conditioning in the top half of the library, so we don't know what it was, but it was massive. So that was kind of a, it's a fun week. We're working on our fall programs. We have some really fun and interesting programs to, going forward. We've got a ghost hunt happening. We've got, the homeschool hub's going to start up once a month. We have Friday movies. We're going to start Friday afternoon movies. So it's going to be a fun fall. We have Dinoember. I don't know if you've ever heard of Dinoember, but it's November, but for dinosaurs, so that's going to be a fun event for the kids. Our summer reading program finished. We had our final event on Saturday. It was at the Rockford Rivets game. The Rockford Rivets generously allowed us to print up as many tickets as we wanted. We had over 100 people attend. Our Friends of the Library sponsored food vouchers, hot dogs, popcorn, and drinks, and so it was a really fun event. So thanks to everyone who attended then and all the people who participated in summer reading. We had over 200 children and over 100 adults participate in summer reading this summer, so that was a pretty good total compared to last year. And our science kits are doing really well right now. Fifteen of the 22 that we have are checked out, so they're going really, really well. And our National Registry application is on hold now until February. It was going to be in October, but they have a lot, a lot of applications, so they're just overloaded. And so we're going to wait till February. We're fine with that. We're not going anywhere. We've been 110 years in Belvidere. We're not going to go anywhere else, so we'll just wait a little bit. So, and that's all I have for you. Nothing exciting, nothing earth-shattering, just trying to keep the library running and keep people reading. So be sure to stop by. If you don't have a library card, come get one, please. Some of you, I know, I see you a lot. Any questions for me?
All right. Well, thank you, Mindy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, and I see you again. All right. Moving on, item seven, approval of expenditures. We have two approvals. One, approvals of expenditures for general and special fund in the amount, expenditures in the amount of $1,526,121.75. If I could get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Questions or comments? Alderman Porter.
I just have a couple here.
Sure.
This one's for Brent, Street Department. It's page 25. There was a one for Nina Foundry Company, $8,500 for cast iron. I was just wondering what that was. The other one's for water sewer, but I'll go ahead with that one right now. It's, um...
Thank you. All those, I'm going to get in trouble. All those in favor of the motion to approve those expenditures, well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And the Water and Sewer Fund expenditures in the amount of $816,878.16. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Flurry. Any discussions? I know Alderman Porter has a question. Alderman Porter?
Okay, I was just curious on page, what is it here? Page 42, there was a bill for $5,293 for fertilizer. What's the fertilizer? Is that just for common areas, like public areas?
No, actually, that is for the new chlorine storage tank that the council approved for purchase. It's actually through the Fertilizer Dealers Association, because they deal with a lot of liquid fertilizers. So it's a plastic liquid tank that we're using to store chlorine.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of Water and Sewer Fund expenditures in the amount of $816,878.16. Well, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through H have been placed on file at the clerk's office. We do have item I, eight I, minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning. Public Works of August 8th, 2022. Could I get a motion and a second for their approval, please? Motion by Alderwoman Mulhall, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any correction, comments regarding those minutes, that motion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And we have item nine, unfinished business. We don't have any this evening. Item 10, under new business, we have item A, ordinance 591H, which is for first reading. You'll be seeing that at the, you'll be seeing, excuse me, you'll be seeing that coming up, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Belvidere and Donald K. Bush Senior, Belvidere Retail LLC, NOM Group LLC. We have for a first reading as well, item B, ordinance 592H, an ordinance annexing certain territory lying north of Interstate 90, east of Trip Road, and west of Genoa Road to the City of Belvidere, Illinois, Boone County. We have item C, ordinance 593H, is a first reading as well, an ordinance approving a preliminary plat titled Belvidere Retail Subdivision. We have item D, ordinance 594H, on the agenda for a first reading, an ordinance approving a final plat titled Belvidere Retail Subdivision. We have item E for a first reading, ordinance 595H, an ordinance granting a zoning district change from RH, Rural Holding District, to PB, Planned Business District between Trip and Genoa Roads north of I-90. We have also for first reading, ordinance 596H, an ordinance granting a zoning district change from Rural Holding District to Planned Industrial District between Trip and Genoa Roads north of I-90. And those are all forthcoming to the council. We have item H, resolution number 2022-17, resolution authorizing participation in the ComEd Green Region Program for the Sixth Street Waterway Improvement Project. Have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman Flurry. Brent, did you have any other comment on this? I know ComEd had made a donation for us after we had applied for their grant.
That's correct. We've already received the $10,000, so this is a formality at this point.
Yep. All right. All those in favor of the motion on the floor to approve resolution number 2022-17, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. And we have item I, resolution 2022-18, resolution, resolution authorizing participation, excuse me. What did I miss here? I'm sorry. Bear with me here. Item I, resolution 2022-18, release of certain executive session minutes pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash one. Those who... Motion by Alderman Snow. Do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Mulhall. Thank you. So we have a motion to release those minutes. Do we have any questions regarding that motion and second on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please?
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Motion passed. Thank you. Item J, I would ask, unless there's some, unless there's objection from the, any of the council members, I would like to move item J to after our executive session, which would be after item A on 11, under other. If there's no objection, I would ask that we do that, if everybody's in agreement. Okay? We will do that then. Thank you. Motion's forwarded from the Committee of the Whole Building Planning, Zoning, and Public Works of August 8th, 2022. Motion's out of Public Works. Chairwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to proceed with Stormwater Utility Survey Results Option Number One, as presented in memo dated August 4th, 2022, from Public Works Director Brent Anderson.
Okay. We have a motion out of committee. Any discussion, any comments regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alderman Burton. I didn't see you. Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. I just want to say that, yeah, I really haven't been a fan of this since day one. I feel that it's just something that we're saddled with by the previous administration. I feel they really didn't know what else to do. And neither do I. It's a hard decision. And I know people talked about what they ran on and talked to people about, and I'm in the fifth word as well, you know, but I ran on, you know, no more new taxes and trying to find ways to not spend so much money. And people, that seemed to resonate with people. I have a ton of questions on this, so, and I won't hold up the meeting with them, I guess. So I don't, I'm not going to support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Stevens, then Alderwoman Freeman?
I've been talking to a lot of people about this, and a lot of them didn't even see the shopper with the Stormwater Sewer in it at all. And I've been talking to people. Those that aren't affected about it are not in favor of it. I even talked to some that are affected by it, that they've told me they've paid for this for years, so why should they get a new tax for this? So, I may have seconded it, but I'm sure not in favor of this whole thing moving forward, so.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you again, Mayor. So I don't know about you guys, but I haven't heard one single alternative brought to this council to help with this issue. Not one single option or alternative to raise revenue for the problem that we face. Not only that, but our Public Works Director, Mr. Anderson, a couple months ago, passed us out our MSV, MS4, which is Multi-Mineral Separate Storm Sewer Systems Draft Permit Annual Training, and asked us politely with some urgency to familiarize ourselves with what is going to happen and how much more this is going to cost our Water and Sewer Department to implement. Mandatory. This isn't optional. So I familiarized myself with it, and I asked myself, where's this money going to come from? So, I familiarized myself with it, and I asked myself, where's this money going to come from? We don't have it. It's going to got to come from somewhere. So unless somebody here can say, look, let's do this instead, this is a better alternative than $3.65 on your water bill, $45 a year. I believe a gentleman stood up here and said he paid $16 for a flipping sandwich at the fair, not to mention $8 admission fee, and we're talking $45 a year? And people have a problem with it? I don't know where they think we get money from, but it doesn't fall from the sky.
Well, I want to make sure that we are a little bit, we are accurate regarding what we had asked the people. We had put this question out to them. Alderman Stevens, I think, points out that maybe not everybody felt that they received, or they saw that that was a question. I think you do, when you do that, when you ask people, you do the best job of marketing. We had taken the steps that was recommended for the city to do that, to reach our citizens, and you know, we'd had a return, I think, of 199 surveys out of 91, 180. I believe it is 91, 180 residents. So we, you know, housing units, excuse me. And so we had made a good faith effort. Was my understanding, whatever that effort was made, that that was the purpose of it, is to see, to be able to gauge. I have you, Alderman Snow. Your arm's going to get tired. Thank you. But, you know, I think we we had carried this over from a previous administration. And also, the results from the survey, when we look at what we had received back. The questions regarding the flooding comeback is a large problem, 32, this is out of 199. 32, a large problem, 86, a small problem, and 73, not a problem. So of 199, 159, does that sound right? Came back as they didn't think that this was an issue now. We have done some things. And we are currently doing some things. I think Brent may want to weigh in after I'm done, but we have decided to, you know, connect to the river and add some storage over on Fifth Avenue. I think it was mentioned at the last meeting, as I recall, that, you know, this may have benefitted certain aldermen's wards or Ward 1 or whatever. Actually, it doesn't. It benefits the entire city. It benefits the city to the south from the river, going south along Fifth, and then also, you know, alleviate some of the flooding that we have. Still, even though we've made improvements on the retention pond at the high school, and we added a retention pond over on over not too far west from the high school, that it does not just serve Ward 1, it serves the southern part of the city, which actually is the worst of the flooding area. So we know that. We also, moving forward, it's my intent, when we move forward, is to try and get some money, some grant money. We know that there's going to be some money that's going to be trickled down through the state. It's going to come from the federal level. Certainly, I would anticipate that we're going to be able to, I know we'll ask for that, but I would hope that it would be successful. Bless you. So, you know, I think, to me, my biggest thing was, and I made it clear a couple weeks ago, that when you ask people and you tell them what you're asking them, and then you do it, and we may not like the response that we get, and then we don't honor what we had set out to do when we asked for it, then I think, to me, that's disingenuous. But I think whenever, also, we look at, you know, we had done that with utility tax in the past. Utility tax back in 1999 was asked prior to the city of Belvidere residents. If you wanted to approve utility tax, the voters took a pass on that twice. And instead of abiding by what they, what their wishes were, the council at that time, they approved it. And for those that weren't here, I can tell you that there was a, a little bit of maybe a little bit of politics that went into that, because even though the public passed on it, the council at the time went ahead and approved it. But the council at that time, they were not they were not sure that they were going to be able to stop that funding being used for anything other than what it was designated for, earmarked for. It was earmarked for road and infrastructure improvements. And lo and behold, there was some language that was put into that ordinance that said if a simple majority of the council in the future, moving forward, if that money that's earmarked for them, if that is not used as what it was as what it was designated for, then the council could at some time represent the taxpayers and undo it. Well, then we find out that that ordinance actually wasn't wasn't the right ordinance in place, and that, you know, they were able to go ahead and use it for anything other than what it was designated for. So you have and to me, at that time, I was on the council, and I, I looked at that as taxation without representation. You had a tax that was levied. You had a commitment by a council that was no longer there. The council was gone, just like someday we will be. This administration, the council members will change. And then when it changes, you know, you have to make sure that the money that was originally taxed, that was a tax that's put on every resident and every business, 5% is already taxed. That money, that money was used when we had a downturn in the economy, economy in '09. And that money was what a lot of people thought was misappropriated. So, you know, I think when we ask people, we have to be forthright with what we asked them, what we want to know, and then accordingly, how we act with their money. It's not my money, it's not your money, it's their money, and they have a chance to weigh in. So little bit of history on that, and that was my feeling about it. I think if there was a mandate, or there was a huge wanting to spend this type of funding on that, I think they would have been a lot stronger than 199 individuals, but there wasn't. So for us to do otherwise is disregarding what they, what we've asked them to weigh in on and what they've told us. So that's how I look at it. I don't know any other way that you can do that. How you do that, how you, how you size, how you how you size that up, or what you do with it, I don't, I don't know how you, how you do, do it any other way. That's just my opinion. I've always been one, I agree with Alderman Brereton. I think when you tax people, I think you should be forthright with what you're going to ask them. And then when they tell you, you don't do the opposite, you do what they tell you. And we do, we are going to try and continue to make improvements. We are going to make them on the Fifth Street project. We're going to start at the base of the problem, which allows us to alleviate funding at the river. We've already obtained property that will do that, and hopefully, we'll be able to do it. Now, we've had, I don't know, I think we had close to four inches of rain here last rainfall. I was up by the high school. I know that pond has been dredged out a little bit more. I think that some of that has helped. I don't know if the aldermen have fielded any question during this last rain event or not. I, I had not. I had not received any calls. And then, as I pointed out also, at the adjacent to the west, the new pond that we added for flood relief. So I'm optimistic that we can put together a plan that doesn't include taxing our residents, adding a tax on, especially when we haven't been instructed to do that after asking. And Brent, what am I missing? Is there anything that you could fill in the blanks for me regarding the low-flow channel over there, and also the Fifth Avenue project and going under Locust to the river?
The low-flow channel as well, it was identified in Baxter and Woodman report for the, for the south side of town, as well as our Fifth Avenue project and the relief storm sewer line as part of that project, as well as the high school and the Bellwood ponds. So we did receive approximately some grant monies to pay for the majority of the cost of the Bellwood and high school ponds. So that money is, that initially came out of our capital fund, will be reimbursed through grant funds, through the grants. We got two grants on those, on that project that will help offset those costs. So next project up on the list will be the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer. Council has approved authorization of purchase of the necessary property needed to create the additional detention facilities and begin the design engineering work for that project. So as part of budget process for next year, will be how we're going to fund the construction of that, which is estimated to be about like 4.6 million is the current estimate for that, as far as that project goes. As far as the stormwater utility and the implementation of the, of the utility, there's several tasks yet to go in that process. It's a fairly long, drawn-out process. So I will outline and update council on that at our next committee meeting. Hopefully, I'll have the information back to give them what the updated numbers, what that time is, and what actually those steps will, will do. We still have to look at whether it is part of the, would be part of the water system for utility billing, or if it's going to be a standalone system, and there's, there's some uniqueness to the stormwater utility that doesn't necessarily mirror what we do now with water and sewer. So we have to work through those issues to see what's going to be the best method, if indeed that goes on. But there's ordinances that have to be done for establishing the rates, how we, how we establish those rates. There's several other steps that have to be done in the implementation process, and several other things that council's going to have to weigh in on and approve in order to actually set that in place. So it's still, there's still a distance to go there on that process as well. So we'll talk more about that at the committee level. And certainly, as far as funding goes, you know, council in previous, previously has improved the additional sales tax for revenue. They've done the local two-cent gas tax for additional revenue. Again, we're going to, we're going to provide where we are at currently with utility tax, and how much of that is, we are able to fund capital improvements for public infrastru-, for the infrastructure, see where that's at. And then we also have, you know, new development coming. The Hydner, the Hydner project on the east end of town is going to provide hopefully, some, some additional revenue to the city, as well as the developments on the west side of town that's going to be breaking ground too. So all that is encouraging news, all that's good news, and the grants, you know, that are more available now these days than not in years past, and hopefully, we can take advantage of those. I did get a little bit of, not to change subject, but on subject of grants, I did get a little bit of bad news. Our downtown redevelopment grant for parking lot number seven, we did not receive funding for that. I got a notification of that in today's mail, so.
And just to refresh the council's memory on that, I think that was a $700,000 grant that we were looking hopefully going to utilize to redo that, the parking down there, and also make some improvements along the river. So, okay, thank you. Alderman Snow.
So this is a big issue, and the longer we drag on this, it's not going to improve. The sooner we get on this project, these projects, and get it funded, and get the money in hand, and start the engineering and get these jobs done, the less expensive it's going to be. Prices are only going to go up, and we can lock this in, the sooner the better. I don't know how else you're going to improve things. People have a right to have their neighborhoods in good shape. Obviously, we, this needs to be addressed, and we, as a whole city, are part of that. Looking at the map over there, I would guess roughly three fifths, or possibly more than half of the people live on the south side of the river. So it's not totally far-fetched that the bulk of those people are going to be the ones paying this, and they're the ones that are going to be benefiting. Everybody benefits from this whole thing, the north side, the south side. And as far as being saddled with the previous administration pushing this forward, it was the previous, previous administration that took the utility tax out of the mix. So it, there is no blame for this. This is something that was going to need to be done at some point. And now, with all the events that have occurred over these last years, it needs to be taken care of, and we need to move forward with it. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Prather.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. I have questions for Mr. Anderson. So how many years, in fact, has this flooding been an issue?
Well, I guess it's, it's always been an issue because it remains an issue. So it does, it's not something that's just going to go away by itself. And it all depends on, on how much rain we get, and how much long, long period of time we get it in. Now, those last rain events we had, yeah, we had close to four inches, but it was spread out two different rain events over a longer period of time, hence not the impact. Our neighbors to the west of us, Winnebago Freeport area, they got five inches of rain in eight hours. When you get that much rain in that short period of time, there's not a water, there's not a storm sewer system that you can, that is built that's going to handle it. Even, even if we were to do all the improvements outlined in the BW plan on the south side, if we get that much rain in that short a time, you're still going to have, it's still going to rely on the overland flow route, AKA through the yards and, and possibly into structures and stuff for it to alleviate itself.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, since we've started studying all of this and trying to figure out a way to fix this, do you have an idea of how much money we've actually spent in trying to do the research and hiring the engineering firms and all of that?
I'd have to go back and take a look and kind of chronicle that order of events and what that cost has been.
Do you have a ballpark?
Off the top of my head, I, I really don't. I'd have to go back and look. I, I'm more thinking of the projects as opposed to the actual cost to get to that point.
And you had stated that if we got a huge, significant rainfall amount, that that's really, given everything that we're considering doing, that's not going to completely fix the problem. But with what we are proposed doing, as far as what the engineering firms have suggested, this will greatly improve the likelihood of the severity of those kind of storms.
Yes, basically, what the Baxter woman, the premise of their study was to look at the older parts of town, parts of towns that were developed prior to our building codes, prior to requirements of stormwater detention, retention into that, and what it would take to retrofit those areas of town to bring it into current compliance with the current regulations. Which would, yes, that would have a significant impact on the, on the impacts of those rain events, were they to occur. However, unfortunately, with Mother Nature seems to be giving us more frequently, more heavy rains more often. And in fact, the state has just recently updated the Bulletin 70, as it's called, with an, with an updated bulletin on, on rainfall events. And those rainfall events have definitely increased, so that, such that everything going in new nowadays are going to be that much bigger, that much more detention required, just because of what we're seeing as trends as far as the rainfall amounts.
Just one more question. Can you give a brief synopsis again as far as how this actual fee works, that it's going to create a specific line item? And continue on as far as how you're able to borrow against that?
So what this, what the stormwater utility will do for us if it's implemented is basically gives you another tool in the toolbox to utilize to, to fund improvements. Stormwater utility will act the same as what a water and sewer utility does, where the revenue generated from that, from the fees associated with that utility are utilized specifically on those items. So it's something that it will be earmarked, identified and used for, so it's basically creating a separate funding source for stormwater, for storm sewers. And by doing that then, and having that as a fee-based utility, then that revenue generation gives you the capability to go out to borrow against that capability.
gives you the capability to go out to borrow against that capability and use your fee generation to, to pay for those. So, instead of using the general obligation of the city and the funding of the city and the general funds, you would use your stormwater utility, and that would basically give you that, that's that extra tool in the toolbox to utilize for funding.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on that.
And as far as how that, that, that fee, and that's some more work that has to be done, it's done some preliminary work now to arrive at that dollar, but then to actually put it into place, you would actually do some more, take a bigger review of your residential, come up with a residential, then your industrial and the other proj- and the, the other properties that would create additional runoff, just because the amount of impervious area they have on those lots. So, that was some of the work that would still have to be done, that we'd have to pay for to establish those amounts on that. And it's, so that's where the, how the fee base is, is based on how much surface you have, impervious surface that you traditionally see in the properties.
Alderwoman Freeman and then Alderman Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, how old is our stormwater system, infrastructure? And there's portions of the city that doesn't even have any, right? Curbs and gutters and, and storm drains? And the existing ones are what, like, over 50 years old at least, correct?
Oh, we've got some, we've got some that go back, go back in the previous century that were made out of limestone block, as far as how far, how far back the, the actual storm sewer improvements go. Your basic design, storm sewer system design, and try to make this short, but it's, it's based on basically a 10-year design, and that's what they've come up with. What's economically feasible when you go in to put pipe in the ground and stuff is what to handle 10-year storm. Anything more than a 10-year storm, then you, you rely on the overland flow routes where Mother Nature has planned for the water to go to get from point A to point B. So, we have, on the south side of town, south of the river, we have a lot of clay soils, very poor infiltration, hence water tends to run off more there, doesn't, it doesn't soak into the ground. On the north side of town, we have more granular deposits, so it tends to soak in faster, which is why you see the majority of the south side of town is storm sewered and the majority of the north side of town is not storm sewered. Not to say that the north side has problems, doesn't have problems, because it does. Again, if we get, it's all based on how much rain you get, how fast it comes down, and the period of time it comes down in, as to what happens with it, where it goes. So, that's basically how the, the underlying issue that, that controls it all. But yeah, there's, there's, there's spots in the north side that don't have any storm sewer at all that, that if stormwater utility is implemented, or for the matter, whatever funding source you're going to utilize to pay for stormwater improvements going forward, you're going to be spending money on the north side just as much as you're going to be spending money on the south side. Just a little different on the south side, it's more repair, replace and upgrade what's already there versus the north side, it's something that's not even there, that you're putting it new in the ground for the first time.
So, this fee is beneficial to the whole city, all residents?
This, this fee will be, would be established to pay for a funding source for storm sewer, stormwater and the, for the entire city, and that would handle anything associated with our storm sewer system. Same as the water system affects everybody in the city, sanitary sewer system affects everybody in the city. It's all one utility in the eyes of that stormwater utility that would be, that would be established.
Thank you. Alderman Porter.
Okay, I just want to say, you know, that I'm not a fan of raising any fees or taxes unless absolutely necessary too, but, you know, again, like Alderman Freeman said, nobody's really come up with a better idea, and I don't see any other option on this, really. One thing that I maybe keep in mind is that I believe that we would have the option of repealing the fee at some point. I understand what you say about that, the administration's going to change, but if we were to receive a grant that would cover the cost of fixing all this, this problem, we could always repeal the fee, is my understanding. Also, I wanted to ask or just throw this idea out here, what about putting a sunset clause on this fee, just to make sure that, you know, it's not abused in the future and maybe there's some ray of hope that it may be ended at some point? Is that a possibility?
Well, I, I would say that this, you know, this fee was, I believe, Brent, correct me, it was, and we call this a fee, fee's a nice word here for tax. So, let's not, yeah, let's not, let's not confuse, let's not parse here and try and, try and make it something it's not. It's, it's a tax. And so, it's been called a rainwater tax, it's been called a fee, but the bottom line is, is that taxpayers are going to pay more money for this, and they have not, unless you want to put it on a referendum question, I think they have not, they have not, in any way have they said, yeah, they want you to do it. Not in any, not in any way, not with the numbers that we've received back. So, I do find it ironic that in a day and age of inflation right now, we have individuals that are struggling to make ends meet, not only in this community, but across the state, the nation. We have other expenses coming up. We have water increases that we're going to have to, we're going to have to entertain, trust me, and we're going to, we're going to address that. We also have not had any sort of a levy increase, for those that seem to forget that, and we are going to have to address that as well. We're coming off of negotiations. I, I see you, Alderman Snow, your arm's going to get tired. And we have, you know, we have other, we still have outstanding debt or potential for debt that we have to provide as well. But I think it's ironic that whenever, in this day and age, whenever taxpayers seem to be, I think Alderman Burden had mentioned it, they think that government takes too much of their money now. And when you ask them and they say, and they come back with a response that doesn't indicate that they would support that, then we're going to ignore that, we're going to, we're going to do it anyhow. So, to me, you know, is that the right thing to do? I, I, I've, I've said it before, fundamentally, I just disagree with that philosophy. I think if it's something that they recognize that we must, we must do, we have to do this, you'd have numbers right here, you'd have them back. They'd be telling you that. They'd be saying, yeah, you're right, we do have to do this. But instead, out of 91, 180 households, we've received 199 responses with 159 of those saying no. So, you know, to me, I get it, I understand what, what the other side of this argument is, the flip side of that, I, believe me, I understand it. I just have a problem, fundamental problem, whenever we have a taxing issue where people don't appreciate it, and we ask them and they tell us, and then we say, no, we know better than you do, and we're going to go ahead and tax anyhow. And fundamentally, I think that's wrong. I think it's a mistake. Put it on as a referendum, put it on, ask the question then, put it in every, put it on, put it on a ballot, we'll put it on a ballot. But I think, you know, to, to do that after what we've done is disingenuous at the least, and I wholeheartedly disagree with that, so. Uh, go ahead. You, you wanted to answer his question, Alderman Porter?
Two actual comments with respect to Alderman Porter's issue about repealing the ordinance in the future. As a, as a general matter, a theoretical matter, a city council always has the ability to repeal a prior ordinance. What will block you from doing that likely is, my assumption is that we will use the funding source of a utility fee, a stormwater fee, to pay for bonds that the city will take out to do the improvements. Once you borrow that money through the bond process, that stormwater fee is the guarantee for that, that money. So, if you repeal it, the money comes out of your general fund. So, as a practical matter, once you adopt it, one, thereafter, once the city takes out bonds, which is guaranteed by that fee, you can't realistically repeal that without negatively impacting your other funding sources. The second comment, tax versus fee, from one perspective, it's irrelevant. You're asking for more money from the constituents to pay for something. Where it has a very specific legal importance is taxes which benefit your general fund are actually appropriate, can be appropriate for any lawful purpose. That's what happened with the utility tax. When you set up a dedicated utility, and that's what they're trying to do, they're trying to make it look like a water or sewer utility. Those are special funds designated solely for those purposes, and you can't take money away from them and put it in your general fund. You can do a fund transfer up to one year and pay it back, but you can't take those monies and shove it someplace else. So, that's the reason why it's being referred to as the fee, is to avoid that situation where a coun- future council can essentially hijack that money for other purposes. Can't guarantee it'll work, but that's the reason they're doing it that way.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Porter, I think you're still going, you still had another question? Yes?
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, for your comment, I want to clarify, you say you are against a referendum, because I, that was my suggestion, that we put this on a referendum and have, you know, the powers to be to put a good, a good explanation on the referendum of how it is going to benefit, you know, the, all the citizens, you know, and then see where it goes from there. I mean, that was my original suggestion way back, and I, I still think that's maybe the way we should go. And also, I was going to ask the attorney about the sunset clause too.
Sunset clause is the exact same issue with repealer. I mean, it's the same issue. If you don't bond for it, yeah. Problem with sunset clauses is the next council could turn around and repeal that section of the ordinance, you know? Sunset clauses really aren't worth the paper they're written on. So, those are the two issues. As far as the referendum goes, remember, that would only be an advisory referendum, and as the mayor spoke about earlier with respect to the utility tax fail, two separate advisory referendums, council did it anyway. That's why I'm, I'm not a huge proponent, it's not, you know, it's up to the council, of course. I'm not a huge proponent of advisory referendums, because if you're going to rely upon how it comes back, perfectly fine. But if you ignore it, now you basically ask your constituents for their advice on how you should proceed, and then look at them and say, ah, we don't care anyway. So, you know, if you're going to do advisory referendum, I think you should have in your own heads that you're going to listen to your constituents. Otherwise, why go through the hassle?
And my answer to you, Alderman Porter, would be, yeah, absolutely. I think anytime that we're, you're going to put a tax fee, ask, you're going to ask people for $45 million over a period of time, and as I had explained, I think, you know, for a variety of reasons, I think taxpayers ought to be able to weigh in on, and that was the purpose of this survey that we'd sent out, that was the purpose of it. So, if you're asking me, do I support a referendum, I would certainly support a referendum over just implementing a, an expense for the taxpayers, and I would expect that an advisory referendum, I would expect everybody to abide by it. Otherwise, don't ask. The same thing I said about this survey, is that if you ask, you should be prepared to live with the response that you have. And that doesn't seem to be what we're talking about here. So, if you, if you're asking about a referendum, advisory referendum, of course, I think it gives the taxpayers a chance. If they don't understand this, which has been talked about for quite some time, but if they don't understand it, you know, they'll vote accordingly. If they understand it and they don't want it, or they do want it, then they should be heard, of course. You bet. I would support, I would support that. I think that would be about as fair as you could, you could get it. Yeah?
One other thing, I, I forgot to mention, I was going to mention that I just think the referendum would be a little bit more official than putting it in the paper, because to be honest with you, I read the shopper, and I, I totally missed the survey myself. So, I just think a referendum might be a little bit more official.
Thank you. Alderman Snow.
So, the attorney pretty much addressed one of the issues that we had about the fact that this is a dedicated fund, the money goes in there, it can only be used for that purpose, just like the water and sewer, they can't be used for other general funds. So, there's no manipulating the money in the future, except for possibly borrowing against it from one department to another, then it has to be repaid. That's slightly different than just taking the money. The other is the, I get the, the, the fact that the survey was grossly underserved and poor responses, but your elections are pretty much the same thing. It's the extremely small snapshot of people who are willing to go out and vote, and I can assure you that you're not going to get an adequate snapshot of what the people really want in general. Nobody wants to have to pay extra taxes slash fees. Unfortunately, it is one of the things that we as elected officials got elected to do was to make the hard decisions, and we're having to do that now.
Alderwoman Freeman and then Alderman Flurry.
Thank you again, Mayor. So, I too read the shopper, and I too did not see the survey, nor did I return one. I don't think that 199 surveys is an adequate snapshot. Had these surveys gone out in every single homeowner's envelope along with their water bill that said, when you come down to City Hall to pay your water bill, bring it with you, or put it in the envelope if you mail your water bill back, or if you pay your water bill online, go to this link and fill out this survey, then all 9,000 homeowners would have had the equal opportunity. But I was about to call you and say, hey, I thought we were getting surveys, because I haven't gotten one. So, I never saw a survey, I never returned a survey, and I don't think that we were elected to let 159 people dictate the city and what, and what, and what we do. We, uh, that's not, that's not, that's not fair. That's not a fair representation, letting 159 people, where maybe 8,000 people didn't see or get the survey, maybe 9,000 people didn't see or get the survey, because I sure didn't, Alderman Porter didn't, and I'm sure there's a whole lot more that didn't. So, that's not a fair snapshot, and we certainly didn't referendum a two-cent gas tax, we didn't referendum jacking up the sales tax, we didn't ask people, we're elected to do what is the greater good for the entire city. And 159 people out of 9,000, 25,000 residents is, is not what is the greater good for the city.
Alderman Flurry?
Thank you. Just to clarify, we've been tossing around this survey and there's been some arguments with it, but, you know, I understand that 199 is not a, not a mandate, and I understand that 159 said there wasn't a problem. However, in that same survey, if we're going to use the survey as proof of our argument, in that same survey, a majority of the people said, how are we going to fund this problem? And the majority said, implement a stormwater fee. There was a special youth survey and some other things, but in that survey, if we're going to say that 159 said it was not a problem and we're ignoring the citizens, in the same sense, in that survey, the citizens said, in order to solve this problem, implement the stormwater utility fee. Now, in the same sense, I understand that out of all those things, we're not going to base it off of 199 people. So, I guess my next question is, you know, just let's use the survey correctly on both sides of it, but, you know, I was going to suggest, same thing Alderman Freeman said, is there a way that we could redo the survey, send it out in the water bill? Is that even an option? Because, you know, I did get the shopper and I saw it and I filled out the survey, but I understand how, because it was loosely in there and maybe wasn't a printed survey that people may have tossed it out. So, is there a way to redo the survey? But I think even then, you know, what's the magic number? Obviously, we're not going to get 9,000 people to do the survey, you know, and just like Alderman Snow said, even if we put it on a referendum, you know, we have 25,000 citizens there and approximately 1,000 votes. So, again, that's not a strong showing of So, again, that's not a strong showing of what the mandate is from the citizens. So, I guess the two questions is, if we do the survey again, what would be an adequate number of people responding to say, this is what the people want? Because I get it, one ninety-nine isn't it, but what is the magic number?
Thank you. Brent?
Just in response, as far as making it as part of the water bills, so the number, the household number, the ninety-one-hundred-and-eighty is the approximate number of households we have in Belvedere. We have about seventy-three-hundred water and sewer accounts in Belvedere, so we're talking about apartments, duplexes, where we send a water bill to one individual that owns several, if they're rentals, and then you have the households there. So that's one of the differences, which is why we went with the shopper method, because we knew if we did just the water bill method, we weren't going to catch everybody. So, our attempt was to catch everybody. So I think if we were going to do some kind of follow-up re-survey, it would probably be more in lines of a direct mailing to the addresses that we could put together through GIES and through what we have in the mapping program, as opposed to a part of the water sewer bill. Just because of the amount of extra work it would take to fold it, stuff it in the envelopes, it's almost a whole separate thing anyway. So, we would be probably more beneficial for us to, just to do a separate, undertake a separate mailing with an individual envelope survey to all of the residents in town, and what that would entail, and I'd have to do a little more research on that. But the research that we did up to this point indicated that including those surveys into the shopper to all the households in Belvedere was the most efficient, cost-effective method of, for us to be able to get that accomplished.
Alderman Snow? Then Alderman Porter?
On that note, though, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's an apartment complex, the people in there don't directly pay the utility tax. The property owner who actually gets the bill is the one that needs to fill out the survey, because he's the one that's going to have to pay the tax that's going to be associated with his property as opposed to the residence. That being said, when you guys do the water, quality water survey or information, does that get mailed out to billable accounts or all the residents?
That gets out to all of our customers.
So that's the billable accounts, the seven thousand. So, again, I would say the water bill is the most effective, because most people are going to see something that comes to them from the city, that they don't get bills from the city, out it goes. Where your, at least your water bill, it's going to be in there, you had a better chance of somebody actually looking at it. This is my thought.
Well, like I said, it would come as a separate mailing to those customers. More than likely, it's going to be the most efficient method for us to do it.
Alderman Porter?
I just had a question here, I don't know if anybody knows this, can answer it, but is it too late to actually get this on the referendum for the next election that we have coming up in November? I'm assuming it's probably too late, but...
I just had a question, because I don't, I didn't see the questionnaire, but was it in Spanish as well?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was or not. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I didn't look at what's on the city's, because it's posted on the city's website, but I don't think it's in Spanish, I think it's just in English.
So, you know, I, look, I want to see, as much as anybody here, I want to see solutions to a flooding issue that the city has. We're no different than any other community, and believe me, I, when it storms, when it rains, you know, I get it, I understand how people feel. The ward that I live in, the part of the city I live in, certainly has dealt with that in the past, and continues to deal with that as well. I just think that whether it be we ask in a referendum, or we ask as a, do a better effort in a mailing, I think we do something to better gauge what the investment of, you know, we talk about who we represent, and we talk about what our job is to make the tough calls, while, you know, the voters are the taxpayers, and they put us in position to represent them. They don't put us in position to represent, you know, what we think, what we want, you know, they're the ones that actually put us in, that's who we work for. Who else do we work for? So, to say that, you know, we don't work for the taxpayer, we're going to discount what they say, to me, is astonishing, because that's exactly who we work for. And, you know, and we should. But I certainly also understand that if we haven't made a good effort, a good enough effort to make sure that everybody gets a chance to weigh in on this, then perhaps we need to do a little better job, and we need to give them a chance. Maybe we do make a mailing out, we get an expense, get an expense estimate of what that will entitle, and I don't think there's, there's no indifference from me regarding that approach. I don't, I don't, I don't have an issue with that. I made it clear, I think I work for the taxpayer, and, you know, I'm going to represent their interest, and if they, if they tell me that that's their interest, that's their interest. Alderman Porter?
Okay, well, I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to amend and to go ahead and put this on a referendum, if you can do that at this time?
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor now, currently, right? We have a motion, motion out of committee on the floor, so I think, you know, that's out of committee, we have to address that?
No, you can certainly amend a motion even out of committee. I don't think I'd recommend doing that amendment at this time. I think it would make more sense to, I hate saying this, because we're up against the deadline, we're up against the deadline, but come back with a separate chance to look at that issue at the next committee meeting, and have it come out of council at the first meeting in June. What's before the council right now, and whereas I'm not suggesting that amendment is has no direct bearing to the motion on the floor. Well, you can certainly do it, it doesn't really relate to the motion on the floor, because the motion on the floor is simply to proceed with the establishment of a stormwater utility. It doesn't actually create it, it doesn't actually adopt any of the ordinances necessary to create it. It simply is direction to the Public Works Department to proceed with the analysis without going back and spending another twenty-five thousand dollars on the outreach program suggested by Baxton Woodman. So you're not actually approving anything with respect to the stormwater utility by adopting this motion. It would allow you to come back in a month, in a week, or in a month, and say, okay, these are the steps we want to do, we want advisory referendum, we want mailers to constituents, we want, you have all those capabilities to do that. I don't think I'd recommend, certainly free to make the motion to amend, I just don't think it's appropriate, given the fact that it does not really relate to the question on the floor.
Okay, I'll go ahead and withdraw the motion to amend then at this point, and then maybe down the road, do it again.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Alderwoman Freeman?
So at this point in time, you know, putting it on a referendum, when things are put on referendums, there's a whole lot of community outreach and education that's put into that. I mean, when they put the referendum on to build a new animal control facility, people had signs in their yards, people went around with petitions, people knocked on doors. It's already the middle of August, and this election is the beginning of November, there's not, there's just not time. I mean, we've been trying to educate the people of this town for years on this, so in the next two months, to try to, I mean, knocking on doors, telling them how important this is, I don't think that there's just time in the day for that, let alone even to get it on a ballot. I don't even, I don't even think we can at this point.
Well, the motion has been withdrawn, that amendment has been withdrawn, so that isn't, that isn't potentially what we're talking about at this time. Alderwoman Mulholland?
I'd like to call a question.
Okay, all right. All right. Hearing no other discussion, we will call this question. We have a motion then out of committee to proceed with the stormwater utility survey results, option one, as presented in memo dated August fourth, 2022, from Public Works Director Brent Anderson. I think that is what we have, so. All those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Nay.
Mulholland?
Nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
No.
Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
Six against.
Motion failed. Okay, Alderwoman, Chairwoman Freeman, item B.
Excuse me, I need to take a deep breath after that vote. B, motion to approve the increase to the construction service agreement for the Southwest Tower rehabilitation project in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars work will be paid for from line item six one dash seventeen eighty.
Okay. We have motion out of committee, any discussion regarding that motion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Okay, motion passed, thank you, and item C.
Motion to proceed with the updated Belvedere logo at the Southwest Water Tower for an additional cost of six thousand dollars, as shown in memo dated August second, 2022, from Public Works Director Brent Anderson.
Okay, we have motion out of committee, any questions regarding that motion, any comments? Alderman Snow?
So, I wasn't here at the last week's meeting, but I know there was three options, ten thousand and fourteen thousand dollars for each of the other one. Out of curiosity, since everybody is concerned about the dollar amount, do we even have to have the logo on it? Just tossing that out there, save you six grand.
Yeah. We, a logo, a logo as far as?
Have you put a logo here on there at all?
Oh.
Or can it just be made?
The current, the current price includes replacement of the logo as it is now on the tower. Going, switching to a logo that matches our welcome to Belvedere more, with Belvedere being bolder, would be those additional costs. So if you went with no logo, we would be requesting a credit of X amount of dollars, we don't know what that would be, from the contractor, if that was the case.
Okay. Right now, we do have a motion out of committee to go with, as you see your, excuse me, as you see in front of you, for the additional six thousand dollars, we have that out of committee. Any other questions, any comments regarding that motion? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor, the motion and second on the, or the motion on the floor out of committee, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Nay.
McGee?
Save the tax.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Okay, motion passed, thank you, and continue on, please.
D, motion to approve the change order number one, number two, and number three in memo dated August third, 2022, from Public Works Director Brent Anderson, for a total cost of eight thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents for the Logan Avenue Rehabilitation Project, work will be paid for from line item one zero dash five dash three ten dash eight zero two one.
Okay, we have motion out of committee. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Okay, motion passed, and item E, please.
Motion to approve the engineering service work authorization from CES Inc. in a lump sum amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred dollars to complete the design engineering for the sixteen-inch water main extension from along Hawkeye Drive and Irene Road. This work will be paid for from line item six one dash seventeen eighty.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee, any questions, any comments regarding that motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Okay, motion passed, thank you, and item F, last one, Chairwoman Freeman.
Motion to approve carryover of twenty vacation days for Jack Button Shown.
Okay, motion out of committee, any comments regarding that motion? Any questions? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Okay, motion passed, thank you, and moving on to motions of out of public safety, Chairman, Chairman Stevens?
G, motion to accept the donation of one hundred dollars, check number four four three five, from Paul and Dorothy Hale, to be used for purchase to be determined at a later date.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee, is there any questions regarding that motion, any comments? I will, I will say again, I know last week we'd had some air trouble here with being able to broadcast, I assume that's, we're all good here tonight, so I do want to take opportunity to thank Paul and Dorothy Hale for their donation. You know, they've, I know Paul, I've known him for years and years, they've lived at the residence where they're at, adjacent, across the street from the PSB, for what seems like forever, and it's very nice of them, and I certainly appreciate it, great citizens, great members of the community, long time, and I wanted to thank them. So chief, if you talk to them, thank them on our behalf.
Will do, Mayor.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulholland?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor.
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And eleven, under other, I would ask that we, item A, we move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining matters pursuant to section two, C two of the- section two, C two of the Open Meetings Act, and to discuss appointment of legal counsel pursuant to two, C one of the Open Meetings Act. Can I get a motion? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry, thank you. All those in, actually, when the clerk calls a roll, all those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.